Mr. Chair, we have a full quorum. We have a full, we have a quorum. There's five people, and you are free to start the meeting, sir.
Okay. We will call the meeting order at 7:02. We'll start with Ro Kong. Jessica, would you like to start us off?
Jessica Sanger, present.
Brandon Weinbaum.
Chris Kombiasky.
Adam Wallace.
Gail Linden.
And approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve last month's agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. And approval of the minutes for August 25, 2025.
I'd like to have one correction put in it. When I started reading it, I went, "What houses do we have in Huntington Woods that are 8190 square feet?" On page one of the minutes, it should say, under Megan's comments in Greg's house, that the west and the east lots have 8190 square feet, not that the houses are 8190 square feet. With that, I would move to approve the minutes as amended.
Do you have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Gail, thank you everybody. And then, item number five, matter of site plan review for addition at 10415 LaSalle.
You can actually grab a seat at the table over there, and just as long as you speak into the microphone, that would be great.
Good evening. My name is John DePore. I'm here representing the homeowners on LaSalle, and I have a plan before you this evening with regards to an addition, second story addition. I think in the '70s, there were maybe '80s, there was a first floor addition out the back, and our plan is to build on top of that. So there will be no footprint increase on the addition that we're proposing. On the exterior materials, currently, the home is mostly brick. There is a little bit of siding. Our plan is to do hardy plank siding on the addition, as can be illustrated on the elevations.
Do you have anything?
Yes. Okay. So, this house, you realize that you had a couple problems with the additions on it, and I'll get to those, but let me give you the facts first on this. So the height is 21 and 1/2 feet, it's proposed. The front yard required is 25, it's 24 feet 9 inches. It's existing, there's no change proposed to that. The side yard is required, minimum five, total 14, 8 foot 1 side, 12 foot 8 inches total, existing, no change. So there's no change to that, and they can't go straight up, straight back. The rear yard is 30. There was no dimension for the rear yard in this, but we figured it out to be 52. Field verified prior to start, but in any case, even though the survey is deficient, they have more than enough square footage, or more than enough footage for that. The existing garage falls into the half of the vacated alley, but appears to be outside of the 6 feet, and they're not touching the garage. So that's existing, non-conforming. Lot coverage permitted, 30%. They're proposed at 23.7. The house size, maximum permitted is 2171 square feet, according to the bonus calculations that I have. They're proposing 2662 square feet. So they need a variance, or they need to revise the plans for this. So, because they do not meet the criteria and that square footage. And the dimensions for the lots, okay, you've got 50 by 125 on each neighbor. Lot area for all neighbors, direct neighbors, 6250. And the house size, 1874 to the west neighbor, 2500 to the east neighbor. And this house, again, is proposed at 2662, which will need a variance. Stories are 1.75 to the west, 1.25 currently to the subject house, and two to the east. Exterior materials are aluminum and vinyl to the west, brick primarily to this house, and brick primarily to the other house, detached garages for all. Again, the project as a whole doesn't meet the standards that we typically look for. They've removed all the windows on the first floor on the sides. And the addition, you know, it's a substantial departure from fenestration and design standards. Our recommendation is to revise the plans and have them either resubmit, or allow for a table for them to adjust the plans to meet the criteria that's required. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. We'll start off with questions. Jessica, did you want to start us off?
I do not want to start.
Okay. Do you want to start?
I can start us off. We said, just as a clarification, because a lot of the times I see is what to be expected. This is going to be a full two-story? Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
And then, with regards to the windows, as it was kind of raised before, there appears to be existing, and then when we demo it, that you're filling in these holes? Could you explain? Do you need to change your windows? I have them on, like, the proposed left elevation. There's two windows on the bottom.
Right. So if we could just address that one. I did speak with Hank last week a little bit, and he mentioned that, hey, where are the windows? So the two that are filled in, there's a kitchen going along that wall, for the most part. Towards the front of the building, we can put another window there. So if we take the front of the building, and just if we were to flip where it says, that where the building, I'm sorry, where the window's getting filled in, if we were to just flip that over towards the front, there, we could capture a window there at that same size. Also, in the back, in the upper back-left corner, we could get a window upstairs in that bedroom as well. So we did find a couple locations to add a couple windows on the sides.
Mr. Chair, if I could just also point out that the proposed left elevation has the same issue as the right, where they're filling in two windows on that side as well.
Yep, and we found locations for three windows on that side. One towards the front of the house, in the den, and then in the walk-in closet, we would like to try to put a transom in that. And then again, in the back, in that upper-right corner, we would mirror the window down below. So on that side of the house, you'd be gaining a window, and on the other side of the house, we'd be keeping the window count the same.
And then the second, where you're doing the hardy plank, you said there was no windows you were going to put, or you?
No, we are going to, yep.
You found a few.
On both sides.
Both sides.
Both left and right. Correct.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, that's not what the plan shows.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, absolutely.
I have the same question.
I have the same questions about the windows. I have questions. I use 3.0 readers, and some of these plans are really light, that are hard to see, or whatever else, to try to make way of it. But you have no rendition of what the house is going to look like completed, front and back, in comparing it to the two houses to the side. And need to see that in comparison. There's nothing here to show us truly a front elevation of what this house looks like.
The front's not changing. So I can bring a picture of that to you, but the front's not changing.
It's still part of the requirement.
It's still part of the requirement.
No, I didn't know that. I don't mean to push back. I just meant, I just wanted to let you know.
It may not be changing, but it means that we've got to go look at it, photograph it in our mind, and remember it, and that's not what our job is. Our job is to look at the plans that you submit, and find out whether they fit the requirements for building it. You know, the fact that you're asking for 461, I think, square feet, more than you're allowed to, 491 square feet, would be required for a variance. So I'd really like to know what reason why it's being overbuilt by almost 500 square feet, you know, for the ordinance, and not giving us the windows and the plans that we should be looking at with full elevations, street view, and so on, for us to consider it as a whole project to the neighborhood are the objections that I have to the plans as submitted.
Okay. Yeah, like I say, this, I only did this after I had already submitted. I just want to let you know, you know, you're dealing with a street shooter. I didn't try to slide anything past you. I wasn't aware of the requirement to get the photographs, and I can do that. And these were just done after I spoke with the building director late last week, after this was already submitted. So I just wanted to make sure that I didn't realize that was an issue until after I had submitted. Yep.
Thank you.
So are you going, asked to table this?
I think probably at this point, it makes sense to table it for next month, or whenever next meeting is.
And then with the revised plans and so forth, okay.
One question, if I may? For the additional square footage, is that this meeting, or is that a different?
That's going to require zoning board of appeals.
Right.
You're going to have to demonstrate a practical difficulty or, as to why you can't live within the ordinance.
Okay, so that's not this group, okay?
That's not this group.
Very good.
Well, we would have to approve the plan first, right?
Well, you would send it to them. They can go for the size variance ahead of time. Typically, we would do that. At the end of the year, you know, you're running into, you don't have a December meeting, so you have only October, only November for them to get this right. So assuming he gets it in for the next meeting, he could be on for the November zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Our approval would be subject to zoning board of appeal approving it.
Correct. But he wouldn't go to the ZBA first, right?
Typically not.
Right.
Okay.
Because he doesn't have plans that we've approved yet.
Right.
Hank, do we need to vote on the table?
Absolutely. You need a motion, and you need to vote on the table. And just to point out for that, for the edification of everybody here tonight, the quorum is five. You need five votes, even though there's nine members on the commission, there's five, meaning you need everybody's vote here in order to pass anything this evening. So with that, Mr. Chair, once again, the floor is yours.
And then, we'll open this up for public participation on this agenda item only. We'll open it up to a broader scheme at the very end. Okay. So we'll open up the public participation.
And so this is the second time I've noticed that something can make it all the way to you guys, and there's things missing on the checklist. So I don't know if you guys don't get this checklist. I know the application in our form is 40-7.03, and everything's labeled, A, B, C, 1, 2, 3, and you guys just have check marks. I know the planning, sorry, I'm losing my position. He has the right to waive requirements. Maybe you guys could ask to see this checked off, or a W if something was waived. So the other thing I wanted to bring up about this house is, I never hear you guys talk about the percent of rear lot coverage. I don't know if you have the chance to drive by it, or look at it on Google Maps, but this house has a garage apron, combined garage apron and patio, that's larger than the garage, and almost as large, just a little smaller than the whole second-story roof. And there's no downspouts on this. I'm assuming the front of the house will have downspouts, but it's showing that second story is a drip edge. So you're going to have this whoosh of water coming down onto that patio. I don't know if it's getting redone, but do you know which way that patio and garage apron is sloped? Is it, is there enough grass to catch it? There's a lady behind them that has almost a whole side lot to her house, and she probably doesn't notice that the back of her yard gets squishy. So I'm just wondering, it's your job in the planning commission, one of the things under intent is to achieve innovative stormwater management solutions, and to prevent adverse impact on adjoining nearby properties. Also, Hank made some comment in the past, you know, it's hard to step in until there's some sort of rezoning going on. So this garage has its setback, it has a very narrow eastern setback, only two, not even three feet. And the downspouts are at the rear of the garage. I saw one was buried, I couldn't see the other one. So where's that water going? This would be the time to reroute it, if it's going to somebody else. So I hope you guys agree with that.
Thank you. Any other public participation? We close public participation.
What's her name?
I didn't catch her name.
Okay.
The.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. A motion.
I'm making a motion to table this until the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
John DePore.
John, until Mr. DePore here can resubmit the plans, hopefully in accordance with the code.
With the code, and Hank, do we need also a different survey?
Well, there's going to be some more information that's, you know, again, this is, none of this doesn't have that. That's why I pointed out to you, which Wisconsin and I didn't see, but that the plans and the survey are both deficient.
Right. Because most of them, we get a topography survey or whatever. This one's just a as-is survey now.
And again, the garage isn't being touched, and the backyard isn't being touched.
Okay.
Right.
First flush. Hi, Friday. You want to go forward?
Okay. We have a motion.
Motion to table.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Would you like your plan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number six, matter of site plan review for solar panel installation at TB911 Lincoln.
We're in a bad spot.
Just scoot over here. And you're first row of you here, right?
They're bigger tables than they used to be.
Would you like to introduce yourself and the project?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Sean Gouge. I'm the homeowner and resident at 8911 Lincoln Drive, here in Huntington Woods. I have a colleague of mine here, who is my installer for the solar panel. Joe, if you want to quickly introduce yourself.
My name is Joseph Nagel. I'm the founder and the owner of Strawberry Solar. Thanks for having me.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I have his presentation here. If you want to go through the presentation, just text it, and I'll be happy to turn the slides.
Yeah, absolutely. I will do that. And I just want to point out, there is the word variance on this slide, and Hank was so kind to correct me and say, "We are here for site plan approval, not a variance." I'm totally fine using the word, because I feel the case and what we have here is important to me and to my wife, Mary, so we want to treat it as such. If you want to go to the next slide, we had Joe already. I put this slide, or we put this slide in here to just showcase the installer that will be doing the work that we've selected, is a very reputable company that has been for a long time already in the market, knows the stuff inside out, and has been, received several awards in the last two years for the installation here in the, not only in the metro area, but in Michigan as a whole. If we go to the next page here, obviously, there's some benefits of solar, but before I just rattle all these points off, I wanted to quickly say one thing. My wife and I, we believe in reducing the carbon footprint and getting off the reliance of oil and gas. We've already made first steps in that direction by driving an electric vehicle, by replacing some of the gas-burning furnaces that we have with electric heat pump. And we feel like the missing puzzle piece in this whole journey is to put solar on the roof, to harvest the energy from the sun, and produce clean energy that then can power the utilities that we have. I would like to showcase a little bit why we're asking for this here, and if you go to the next page, the understanding that we have is that the current ordinance prohibits solar panels on a street-facing roof surface. And what we find at 8911 Lincoln Drive is that the house has three streets that are surrounded. It's basically sitting on a peninsula city block. There's Lincoln on the front end, which gives the address. There's Wyoming on the west side, and then there's Huntington on the east side, all bordering the properties, which basically leaves only one side, the south-facing side, as a side that is not facing a street. And there's, we have some pictures here, and some data behind it, why this would not be a suitable site. Before we go into it, just wanted to give you a little understanding of what's the system we're putting in here, and what's the size of it. So we're aiming for a, Joe, please correct me, for a 39-panel system, which would produce approximately 17 kilowatts of power. And based on our consumption and the utility bill that we have, this would cover approximately 47% of our electric consumption on a daily basis. All the panels are of the type that you see to the right. JA Solar manufactures them in the U.S. They are all completely black. They have no reflective surface, there's no glare. The frame around them is black, and they would be mounted on our black roof with black rails, so there's nothing that actually stands out. It blends in seamlessly, black on black. If you go to the next page, we see a little bit, a bird's-eye view of the house. The top of the picture is basically our driveway that faces Lincoln. The left side is Wyoming, the right side is Huntington Street. If we were to look at what is actually the only south-facing roof, you see that little red area is a flat rubber roof that sits right underneath the upper windows of the living room, and it would allow for approximately four to five panels being installed on that one section. All the other roof sections are facing a certain street, or have like a lot of vents and air ducts, so that they're not suitable for an installation. Because it's a flat roof, the solar panels would have to be tilted a little bit, and then not only obstruct the natural light, but you basically would not be able to like see through, see out the window, and you would look from the living room to the underside of the solar panels, if we were to put panels on that section. If you look at what we are proposing, and that picture is turned because of how it was shot, so the left side here is the driveway facing Lincoln, and the bottom, the lower area, is what's facing Wyoming. We're proposing to put the system on the Wyoming side only, because of it being the west-facing direction, which we did a study, how much sunlight can get captured on which section of the roof, and this was the best, the best option for getting the most efficiency out of the sun direction. The roof, as you can see here, is very low-pitched. These are actual pictures from Google Street Map, when you basically drive by and you look onto the roof, you cannot even see the roof. So above that big front window to the right, that's the area that is being proposed. And if you click one more, Hank, you see it from the Wyoming side, so this is what my neighbor would see, and you cannot even see the roof at the top and the installation. Joe, it's very flush, there's only like a few inches that it goes up.
Less than five inches.
Less than five inches, so it would not even be visible from the street. Probably if someone comes down Lincoln, long way in, six, seven houses away, they can see maybe a little bit, but the neighbors that are immediately sitting in their backyard and looking over are not able to see the installation that goes on the side. If you go to the next page, I took the liberty and asked my neighbors that would be bordering directly the proposed area, and that's that yellow box in the middle. So there's four neighbors that can look at it. Helen is the number one, Helen Edwards on Vernon. And by the way, none of them have a Wyoming address, because of how their houses are oriented. The second one, which is my direct neighbor, Brian Wismer, he has a Lincoln address. Then number three is Rabbi Hadar. And then, basically looking like that one picture that you saw when you looked to the front of the houses, what number four, Ryan Lando, would see. I asked them, informed them about the project, and they have all given me in writing, and Hank has that.
They have, yeah.
They have it too, right? And okay that they support the project, they have no objections, and they feel this is of great benefit for the community as well. Joe was able to kick off the DTE approval process, and DTE has already issued an approval letter, obviously pending the approval here and the installation, but they said if we were to move forward, this project is approved with the interconnection agreement that we need to have in order to draw electricity when you need more, as well as that they can draw from you, and you can like put it when you produce electricity back into the grid, so it can benefit other DTE customers, right? And so that's already approved, and is basically waiting only to be moved forward, given the outcome of tonight's meeting. There is a critical timeline, and you are all aware that our president changed the bill earlier this year, and is ending the residential solar tax credit by 1231 of this year. The requirements to still take advantage of this tax credit is that the system needs to be installed and then approved by DTE. They come out, they inspect it, they test it, and then they say it's good to go, and that signature needs to happen before the end of the year. So that's a little bit what, Joe, you told me what the timeline would look like. If we were to get an approval tonight here on this request, we would still be able to be meeting that timeline and to get DTE out to sign off on it.
Yep.
And I think that's what I have, in all honesty. Any questions? Anything?
Hank, did you have anything?
I did. I just want to point out, and I'll use Dr. Gouge's design here to go through it. They're here because they specifically are requested, are required to go to the planning commission, this doesn't get referred automatically to the zoning board of appeals. The condo line is 40-9.03, solar structures and easements. Separate, non-integrated, flush-mounted solar panels shall be located on a rear or side-facing roof, which do not front any street. Therein lies the problem that Dr. Gouge has. He fronts every street. So he can't do that. So again, he's pointed out previously that the only one that would not front a street, he can only get five panels on him, which doesn't pay. So effectively, what he's done is they proposed the west side of the house, which not only allows them to fit the panels in the best light, but it also exposes it to the least amount of residences. Typically, the objection to this was that people didn't want to look out and see, look out their front door and see the panels, or they're not going to. The residents that he's looking at, that he borders on that side, fronts off of Lincoln, so the only thing that they see is the side. He looks at the side of the Wismer house, and the Wismers look at the side of his house. So they don't see it. You can see the elevations that were presented to you, and you can't see these panels anyway. And at a five-inch rise, it's doubtful that they'll make any impactful, any impactful decision with this anyway. So I just want to point that out, and this is the first one that's come before you for that, but if you took a look, and also you can see what his slide is, is that while his front actually is Lincoln, this is not one of those cases where there's a platted front and a technical front, this is one of those cases where he fronts Lincoln. So his only option is to put five solar panels on the back, which doesn't accomplish anything, or to come here before you and ask for an accommodation to put it on. or to come here before you and ask for an accommodation to put it on the side that A, has the least impact to the neighborhood, B, gives him the most impact as far as the solar capture that he has on that, and C, he's gone ahead and gotten all the neighbors' approval that are directly abutting his property that are impacted by this. So with that, I, this is, this is one of those cases where, and there are only a very few peninsula lots in Huntington Woods, Dr. Gosch just happens to have one of them. And he also wants to be very, you know, environmentally conscious, so he's here before you tonight to ask that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, as I'm sure he and his, he and his entourage, I should say, are there. Whatever, whatever you would like, Mr. Chair.
Thank you to both. Would you like to start us off?
Sure. I really only had just two questions. The first question is, is with thirty-nine panels, I think it's around two thousand pounds or potentially more. Have you taken a look structurally to look at the roofline to withstand that kind of weight?
Yes, we already went through engineering. We hired a third-party, Green Lancer, they're based out of Detroit. We took photos and measurements of all the trusses, and we did a load calculation, and it's definitely, can support it.
Okay. The second question I had, and I didn't see it in the drawings, was is I'm assuming as you produce electricity, the joy of solar is use it or lose it unless you store it. So you're going to be putting it in a battery system?
He has a system that if he wants to add a battery, it's plug-and-play, but the D T E interconnection, that's so that when he puts energy onto the grid, they give him credits that he can use at night or in January when it's not sunny. It's like a give and take.
So is the assumption then, as he produces electricity, if he is using it, it goes to the house, and if he's not using it, it goes to the grid?
Yep.
So there won't be a battery system?
No battery.
You said plug-and-play, where potentially could that be?
If he wanted to, we went with the end-phase system. It's basically little building blocks, and if he wanted to add batteries, we would put them in the mechanical room or the garage, or maybe, yeah, inside secure. They are, they are weather-rated also, so if he wanted to put them outside, he could.
I prefer them.
They make no noise.
Okay. That's the, really the only two questions I had, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jessica, do you?
Yeah, just for clarification, from a process perspective, so this goes to us to approve and that if we approve it, it does, that goes to the Z B A?
It does not go to the Z B A. You are the determining body, it goes from here to the building permit.
Okay. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that you spoke to all the neighbors and got their signatures and proactively ensured that it wouldn't be disruptive until you're done, so I appreciate you doing that proactively.
Thank you.
Hank, I'm just, I'm kind of curious how this is a planning commission issue as opposed to a Z B A issue?
Because in the ordinance, in the solar system and easements, instead of saying that it goes to the Z B A or where it normally goes to the Z B A, it's specifically called out, and it says unless such installation is proven to be ineffective or impractical as determined by the planning commission. That's how it gets used, because it's-
Those are Z B A words, though.
Specifically, it specifically comes to the planning commission because the ordinance has passed, requires it to come before you.
Okay. And I, I just want to note for the record, there is a letter here from somebody in the notice area that is not in support of this, for various reasons.
That is correct. I don't know what the bandage font or who that-
I don't think the address is on here, so. It's signed resident living in notice area, so I just wanted to point that out. But this was very interesting and very informative.
Gail?
I'm glad we had somebody started off who knew something more about the electrical panels and the system and solar panels and so on, and I'm glad to see that, you know, people in the neighborhood are doing things to conserve electricity. And I think that the eastern Wyoming side is definitely better than the Huntington roadside, because it's more exposure from people coming both directions, and as the road comes down, you will see it coming down, where you're not seeing it on the other side. And the interesting thing that I learned in reading your contract is it said that you only have to comply with the state of Michigan's rules about installing it, and if the city of Huntington Woods has anything to the contrary, you don't have to apply, you don't have to abide by it, and that was the first time I ever saw something like that.
We would take issue with that.
Well, it's in the contract, and I read it.
It's called the Home Rule Act.
You know, and that's why I was quite surprised by that, you know, as to whether the installation and everything else fitted, but it was in your contract, it said the only people that you had to answer to, you know, as far as ordinance was concerned, was the state, and I was surprised by that.
I think that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
Bringing this up.
So.
They're here tonight because they're respecting the city Huntington Woods ordinance.
I appreciate it, and it has my support. It was just an interesting part in your contract that, you know, I've never read other contracts because this is the first one before us, and we don't usually get the contracts. It's usually between you and your, your client, but it would be between you and the city also.
Any further questions, Gail?
Nope, that's it.
I have the same questions that Brandon did, so I have no further questions. At this point, we'll open up to public participation for this agenda item only. See none, we'll close public participation, and Chair would entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve finding that, prove the plan as-is, finding that they did effectively prove that installation on the front of Wyoming, installation that didn't, that in the backyard would be ineffective and impractical.
Second.
All those in favor? opposed? Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Maybe I'm on the same grid and I'll get some of your electricity.
Yeah.
So we'll add them.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Matter of site plan review for the addition, I had one-zero-one-zero heart. You can have a seat up here if you like, yeah, welcome. If you'd like to introduce yourself and the project?
Sure. Robin Baloo, I'm the designer on the project for the owner, Sean, who's in the audience tonight. This house started under a original design by a previous owner, and during the construction, it caught on fire. So it burned the bulk of the second floor off of the house. It was a small bungalow originally. And in part of that project, they decided to cease the job and sell the house. So the new owner purchased it, and then we went through to try and reevaluate what, you know, best use for a house that was in that kind of condition. Entire roof has to be removed regardless, right? It's a burned, burned-out second floor. So in that design, we decided to ask, we go above, you know, remove the entire roof, add a new second floor, repair all the damaged, you know, woods and materials as required, and try to maximize the sort of appearance of the house and honoring, you know, what the city requirements are. I think we got all the checklist items on there. Please, thank you. So the intent's a, you know, a full second floor addition, going up and over the existing, no changes to the first floor. We're not expanding the size of the footprint, we're not changing the garage, we're purely going on top of the existing footprint, over the existing foundation that was already there from the previous house, so. You know, we're maintaining the, you know, the appearance guidelines, we're adding windows, all the elevations, maintaining all the windows from the existing first floor, and obviously trying to add as many windows on the second floor as we see is appropriate to meet the guidelines and, you know, that look are culturally appealing at the same time. And so I really think we're doing a nice job as far as maintaining the look and getting something that's, you know, that's going to improve the look for the community and not just be an addition. All the sidings propose to be an L P, paintable product, right? So it'll look like siding that's painted. A portion of the first floor that was there is brick, we're proposing that we paint that brick. Neighbors on one side already have a painted brick, so we're matching that sort of look. And then updated windows, divided lights, so it should look pretty original or authentic to the community, the idea.
Hank, anything?
Yes, sure. So I'm going to show you on the first page here, let me just. There we go. So other than, the address to the right by the window is not ten-seven-hundred.
Oh.
It's ten-seven-ninety. But having said that, what we're looking at here is the house. The height is shown wrong, it's actually twenty-eight feet. It's measured what appears to be to the mean, twenty-nine-point-two, twenty-two-point-nine-one. We don't measure to the mean, we measure to the peak. So the front yard is also twenty-five-eighty-five, existing, no change. It's a little bit bigger than is required. The side yard, required minimum five, total fourteen. Proposed here is five-point-nine-two, one side, twenty-point-eight total, which is significantly more than they require. The rear yard, excuse me, is thirty feet is required, proposed is fifty-two-point-oh-five. Again, existing, no change, and their lot coverage is twenty-five-point-seven percent of the fourteen-hundred-and-fifty-eight square feet. The maximum house size permitted is twenty-one-oh-two, and they're at two-thousand-sixty-two, so they are under that. These lots are a little bit awkward, and I'll explain why. The lot at one-oh-eight-one-eight heart is forty-five by twenty-five. The lot at one-oh-eight-one-oh heart, which is a subject property, is forty-five by one-twenty-five. And the lot at ten-seven-ninety heart is sixty by one-twenty-five, actually. I think that had one-thirty-six, but it's actually one-twenty-five. Having said that, Hart was originally built as a downtown for the city of Huntington Woods. So what we had was is that Hart was going to be all stores going all the way from Wyoming all the way up. So that's why they had twenty-foot affrontage, because if you take a look at the commercial applications, there's a bunch of twenty-foot stores, they're all neighborhood stores. That was what was originally intended for Hart. So Hart typically has an awful lot of lots that were split up, lots that were combined, lots that were subtracted from, so that's why you get forty-fives. You know, you get those type of dimensions on this because that's how that happened. So when people, you know, sold off of that, that's what, that's what they did. So the lots and area are smaller, so they're fifty-six, sixty-two square feet. The one at one-oh-seven-nine-oh is ninety-three-seventy-five. For that was what they had on that for the survey that I was able to get in any case. Oh, they had, okay, yeah, so they had, they had a difference in that. So there was again the twenty-foot vacated Newport Boulevard, so that lot was more substantial. The house size, fourteen-seventy-nine to the west, one-oh-eight-one, one-oh-one-eight-oh, which is a subject house, is two-thousand-sixty-two, and the house, even though it's on the biggest lot, is fourteen-hundred. There's two bungalows with them, which will be a colonial in the middle. There's precedent for that, that's not, you can't have different types of architecture on the same street. Exterior material is brick and siding, which is similar to the West House, and the East House has brick. The West House does not have a garage, and their garage is detached, as is the neighbor to the east. So once again, with this, there's no change to the footprint of the house, but still you want to consider stormwater that should be managed on-site. If you take a look at the survey, there's a note that says all stormwater will be retained on sites, and they have the grade shots on the survey for that. So having that, let me just point out, let me go to this, so you can kind of see the elevations here. Whoops. Pretty good if I would let you. You can see the house has adequate fenestration on all sides, which is something that a lot of houses don't get, but you see what they have, they put in adequate fenestration. There's also some architectural intricacies to the house, but this house right here, even though it was showing partial brick, which you can see it still shows partial brick, but there's a lot of siding, the second floor is going to be siding. So whereas the house was a brick house, predominantly brick, it will now be predominantly a sided house. So having said that, they've also selected L P siding, which is a significant upgrade from vinyl. L P is a paintable product, it's basically, it's glue and wood is what it is, and it's, it's the refined cousin to O S B. And what it is, is it's smaller particles, glue, and you can get a wood grain embossed on it, and it looks a lot more like wood than anything else. So having said that, you can see all the elevations on the side here. Oops, wrong one. Why won't this, there we go. So you can see the houses that you have there, and again, the ten-seventeen, the ten-seven-hundred is actually ten-seven-ninety. But that's what you have there. One-oh-eight-one-oh heart will be a full two-story house, as you see it drawn up there, and they've drawn the elevation so that it's to scale on top of that. Appreciate the effort there, but that gives you an idea of what it is, not only with the photos, but also with the elevations as drawn. Again, I did want to point out that that is twenty-eight and a half feet tall at the peak. It's allowed, but it's twenty-eight and a half feet tall at the peak. And they did not get all their bonuses, which is why they're under twenty-one-hundred square feet, so. And it also is based on R-one-E site plan criteria.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so do you have any?
Sure. I did have a couple of questions. The first question I had, and I think you had that drawing, the first drawing up there where it showed the, that one.
Yep.
It says that we're not doing additional square foot, and I just want to make sure, when we talk lot coverage, because they are right there, fourteen-fifty-eight.
Yep.
They have a hundred-and-seventeen-foot proposed deck.
Yeah.
That doesn't count as part of lot-
We're not approving the deck. We're approving the, it counts as rear yard lot coverage, but when you count for like the thirty percent or the criteria for that, it's only anything covered by a roof.
By a roof.
Right, which that does not have. But you also get fifty percent of the rear yard lot coverage, which is a different standard. So basically, they not only want you not to cover thirty percent of the lot with anything by a roof, but you also can't cover the backyard with fifty percent of anything. And you can see by the criteria that they've got there, that it's, there's a tremendous amount of space, and maybe it's not even a question, yeah.
Okay. The second question I had did deal with some of the windows, and actually, if you slide, I think you were there to-
Tell me where you want me from.
Go back, one more. Right there. So I was curious to know, when I was looking at it, and I kind of looked at it against, where that chimney is on the bottom, is there a reason, because that's your primary bedroom where that chimney is, and the only other spot you have is potentially a bath, a window in that bathroom? Outside of that entire space, I did not see a window on that second story for that bedroom.
Just the one on the front, and then there's the one in the master closet, it's on the front elevation, all.
Is there a reason, though, there's none on the side?
Not just that the bed's going to be on that wall, and then you'll have nightstands, and so it's just going to interfere with placement. And we thought we were, you know, architecturally, I don't know that it helps, you know, so we were kind of putting the windows where they, you know, help the elevation.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I think I know where you're going with this, Brandon. Which one's your egress window?
The front.
Thank you. Go ahead, okay. Jessica?
Question.
Is the siding brick issue more of the matching issue that we've seen in the past, or?
If it's an issue for you, it's an issue, but typically, when you have a predominantly brick house that's going to be an actually sided house, I bring it up because you're changing the character of the house. So that's it. Not that that's necessarily wrong, not that that's necessarily right, but it's something where you have a house that was predominantly brick that is now going to be predominantly siding. Having said that, they're using a higher-end product for the siding, so it's, it's up to you as far as that process.
If I'm correct, then the front of the first story is painted brick?
Correct.
And the chimney is painted brick?
Correct.
Okay. And is the garage staying as-is? Because there's nothing on the plans for a garage.
It's existing garage, yeah.
You're leaving the existing garage, it's not being touched, it's staying right where it is in the same- it is, and the same plan that is in the same?
Correct.
You know?
No proposed work in that area.
Well, no proposed work or cement or changes in that area?
It's in fine shape.
Okay. And I see that you do have black gutters on all four sides and downspouts?
Correct.
From the second floor on, you know, all four corners?
Yep.
Okay. No other questions then?
No further questions from myself. At this point, we'll open up to public participation.
I'd like to request that any drainage reviews be included with the plans? Did you guys get them? The drainage review?
There happens to be a topography and...
Because reading the... So if that could be included, is...
Uh, please, I'm ordering to the chair. It's not a debate.
Okay. So I'd like to see that. And then that house obviously has plenty of room, the backyard. They have a drip edge garage. The one thing I noticed, the high point, is at the middle of the house, at the driveway. So currently, you are managing the rear of driveway water in the backyard. So do they intend to replace the driveways? Sometimes when you get a pretty new house, you want a pretty driveway to go with it.
It's not in the design right now, no. We're not planning on replacing the driveway.
Okay, so the drainage review is approving it to drain to the backyard and manage it in the backyard? Because, because number 48, which is from the master plan, which is high on your priority list, is other requirements could include requiring residential properties to add over a certain threshold of square footage to show retention of first flush storm events for the metcrease. So I don't know if you guys have decided what your certain threshold of square footage is. I think I showed it to you, maybe it was the city commission, Ann Arbor's determined any addition over 200 square feet, you have to prove that you're managing water. Again, I don't think this house is a problem. But again, if everybody puts in a new driveway, I ran into a driveway contractor and asked him, you know, which way do you try and make it go? And they say as much as possible, they tend to get the driveway from the back of the lot all the way to, all the way to the street. So that means all these new houses, they're, they're going to get to keep a drier backyard if they can throw all their water to the street. So I think some decisions should be making, should be made. Some, Oak Park is looking at each house's unique footprint, and they're trying to get them to encourage them to manage water in the backyard.
Any other public participation? All right, seen none, closed public participation. Chair would entertain a motion on 10810 Hart.
I would make a motion to approve with the condition of managing storm water, not to discharge on neighboring properties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Do you want to share?
Plans or anything?
Saying this address is 790. Do you want survey? Make shade, get the right surveys in.
Agenda item number eight, matter of site plan review for the addition at 13132 Ludlow.
Hi. Barry Chesterman. Have lived at 13132 Ludlow since 1987, and love the neighborhood, obviously. We are looking to add one bedroom and one bathroom on the second floor to accommodate our growing family. When the family comes in, we've got to use our neighbors as an Airbnb. And we prefer not to have to do that if we can avoid it. Also, with four kids and currently two grandkids and one additional significant... Now that we tend to run out of bathrooms, so having another bathroom would be a wonderful thing. The plan is to match the siding of the rest of the second floor, rest of the second floor. We have a cape card, by the way. So much of the second floor looks like roof from the front of the house. Planning to, that's, it's not yet our house, so. Nope, it's not it either. That's... So the, the plan is to, as much as possible, keep the house from the front looking very similar to what it does right now with white siding to match the existing white siding on the front of the garage and on the dormers in the front. Windows on each side as to match the, the requirements. And really, I'm not sure what else, what other questions there might be related to this. It's a small addition, it's one bedroom. We're just taking out a window at the top of the stair, well, off to the side of the top of the stairs, and pushing out towards the garage over, over the, what was a breezeway in 1987. And since 1988, it's been connected to the house. So, the original house had a breezeway, not there anymore.
Thank you. Hank?
Yes, thank you. Basically, this is kind of a real simple one. They're not asking for a ton and a half of square footage, and they have one of the biggest lots in the entire area. So you're looking at a lot that's 90 by 168, has 14,782 square feet. So having said that, the house height on this is not changing, they're staying at the same height. The front yard is the same, the side yards are the same, the rear yard is the same at 83 square feet, or at 83 feet. Lot coverage is only 17%, 2,498 square feet, that's existing, no change. The house size as proposed is 2869, the maximum allowed is 3275, so they're well under that. They do get some of their bonuses, but they don't need all of them. So there, it's one of those type of things. You're looking at lots next to them, you know, you hit this lot again, it's, they're all irregular shapes on that particular block, so there's not one straight line on any of them. But the west neighbor is 73 by 162, their 90 by 168, and 43 by 169, again, all are irregular. And those right side measurements or the depth measurements are averages. And that's how Oakwood County does it, so when I look them up, I look them up through Oakwood County. The lot area for the west neighbor's 11,826 square feet. Mr. Chesterman's is 14,782, and the east neighbor's 7,298. And again, that lot has a smaller width at 43 feet. The house size to the west is 1,595 square feet. Their house as proposed is 2,869 square feet. And the house is, the biggest one is 3,278, is what they have for the house next door in the east. They're colonials, except for the house on the east is modern. And the house on the east did receive a variance for some additional square footage. I remember that, but I don't remember exactly what it was. Again, two stories all the way down the line, brick and siding on all of the properties. And the garage is attached on the Chesterman home. There's a carport to the east and detached on the west. So again, that's what we have, so if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. As I'm sure Mr. Chesterman is.
Thank you, Hank. I actually have no questions for this one, but I thought it was really great.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Um, just on the west elevation and the lack of windows, from what I can see on the plan, would you be interested in that?
The west elevation, actually, if you look at the, at the interior plan, it's not a living space. It is brought out to the peak of the garage, but the actual bedroom is going to end significantly earlier than that. So that's not, it's not going to be visible. And we could add one for aesthetics if necessary, but it wouldn't, wouldn't bring any light anywhere.
No questions. Gil?
You're only adding a, an additional bedroom above an existing room on the first floor?
Correct.
Are you converting the first floor space in any way? It's not like a porch or something that you're enclosing?
Nothing.
The only thing that I was a little confused with was in your roof lines and your use of metal roofing. Your metal roofing is being used more as frontage kind of siding vertically, is that the case? And then there's a shingled roof that's running, like, because I just didn't understand. And I was wondering if there was a picture of it, you know, or something like that. I was looking at the roof plan, trying to see what was metal and...
Stop me when you, when you go with your...
That, I think that shows us from above. So the front of the house is facing down, the back is facing north, that's the back of the house. The metal roof, because we need to maintain a certain level of height within the room, it's a very shallow pitch, which is why it's a metal roof.
Okay.
A shallow roof back there would not work.
Okay, so it, it, it is on a slant, but it, it's a, because it almost looked to me, when I was looking at the plan, that it might have been more vertical to get the roof up, but, okay. Because that's the only metal roof on there?
Correct.
And it, it talked about having a, you had a ridge vent, and you also had a drip edge, you know, on it. So I was wondering where the, you know, where the gutters were, if the roof line was changing there as to what you were doing to get the water off the increased height in the roof?
Typically, anything under a three or like two and a half, three pitch, it has to, can't be shingled. The manufacturers don't warranty them, so you either go to a metal roof, or you go to an EPDM product or something like that. So you're noticing that, yes, that is the reason for that, because they can't get the pitch and maintain a roof height in the roof.
But in order to get the roof up to there, how are you running that water off?
It's going into, that's the back of the house.
Okay, but it's still, so it's going into his yard?
Yes.
You know? But, you know, I didn't see any gutters or anything like that, so that it's his problem if he's got water problems, then if you're saying we don't have to see them?
That's, actually, it's a good point, but we do have, if you look...
You just look at the gutters all around.
We have gutters, we have gutters coming out from the addition where you see the half-moon window above the sliding door.
Okay.
Over there to the, to the right-hand side, which is where the metal roof will come off, there's a gutter that comes out, and it's a downspout that comes out at the front of that addition. That's from 1994, I believe, when we added that addition. So, yeah, we can, we can definitely maintain the water well within our yard.
Okay. And the other thing is, on your plans yourself, your architect drew your existing residence at 10135 Ludlow instead of 13132.
Oh. Yeah, that's, it's listed on the actual title block, but then I, okay, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. I just have a Hawkeye, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions from myself. We'll open up to you public participation. Seen none, we'll close public participation. The chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the plans as submitted, and that it includes managing storm water so as to not discharge onto neighboring properties.
Second.
Second by all. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Would you like your plans as well?
Would you, would you like more of your plans, Barry? You can use them for wallpaper or something like that, you know? Yep. Or the grandkids can color it.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number nine, matter of site plan review for the addition at 26034 York.
That's us.
I think I gave away the wrong survey, well.
Hello, everybody. Good to meet you all. I'm Sarah. This is Joe. We're married. We moved to Huntington Woods about a year ago, and we've been really loving it so far. We came from Royal Oak and before that, Lake Orion area. So, excited to be here, and we both work downtown, so it's been a really great move for us. We're excited about adding some space to the home, specifically because we have a screen-in porch currently on the main level that, as much as we love it, did not survive this winter, and it's completely really rotted, kind of from the inside out. And needs to come down at this point, it needs to at least be rebuilt. But with that being said, the more that we talk to our builder, the more that we started to talk about what we want out of this house and it to be our forever home and grow into it while we don't have kids today, we do have a play structure for when we do have kids one day back there. But this will be great for us to have the space in the future. And so, upon talking, we decided it would make more sense to enclose the porch, make it an all-seasons room, and then add space on top to make the bedroom, or to make a bedroom office kind of extra space up there. That's it, really. We are excited about it. Happy to answer any questions, and... Yep?
Thank you.
Hank?
Yes, thank you. What we have here is really nothing that's atypical. It's a reverse gable off of an existing house. I mean, that's typically how they add space to this. I will point out, correct me if I'm wrong, that it appears that this structure is built on an existing foundation.
Yes.
So there is no more space being taken up than already is being taken up.
Correct.
The fact that it's two floors really doesn't change anything, because whether the roof is on the first floor or the second floor, it doesn't necessarily change much of anything at all. They have shown the downspouts and gutters on this. The only thing that you want to be cognizant of is that they say new siding, but on the left-side elevation, they say new double-five vinyl siding. So that's a, that's a question that, you know, you want to take into consideration with that, is the use of the materials and the consistency for that. I will point out that it is not in the historic district, so they're not governed by any of those rules, otherwise it would have gone there and not here. So they have done this with a lower than the regular set, than the regular house, shorter than the main building at 21.3. The front yard, proposed at 43 feet, which is the same, no change. 2,05, total 14, is the side yards as required. Proposed 10-foot one side, existing, an addition is not encroached, 24.7 total. This addition is pretty much in the middle of the house in the back. So it's, there is substantial room on all sides of this. The rear yard at 51 feet 11 inches, lot covered, permitted is 30 feet, is 30%, pardon me, at 2,520 square feet, proposed at 17.5. New, I'm sorry, the maximum permitted house size is 2,900. They're nowhere near that at 2,124. So this is just kind of like an addition, putting two rooms on it. One is quasi-outdoor indoor space, and the other is indoor space. But that's what it does give them. So the dimensions on the lot, the lot on both sides of them and their lot is 60 by 140, all of them across the board, 8,400 square feet. The house size, 2821 to the west, which is actually the north, and 2124 for their house, and 2,711 to the other side. So even after the addition, they're still the smallest house in the three in the neighborhood with that. Again, all colonials, except for the neighbor to the other side, is a 2,711 square feet house, is a two-to-revival type of structure. Stores are two for all of them across the board, exterior materials are brick. This is brick and siding, and both neighbors have brick. This is a detached garage, as is the one neighbor, and the detached garage is to the other side at 2,620 York. So having said that, this is pretty much straightforward, pretty simple. I will point out that you can see that they do have windows on all sides of the elevation. They are using some trim boards around the windows. Again, they don't need the bonuses, but this is what they have. If there's any questions, I'm sure they or I could answer them.
Thank you, Hank. Do you want to start this off again? Again, I think the drawing sounds pretty good. I really don't have really any questions. I like how the windows lay out. I think the only thing, and I think Hank brought this up, the final siding that you were going to use, is that, I'm assuming for cost reasons?
Yes. Yep.
And then that vinyl siding, is that more, because this is the back of the house, correct?
It is correct.
Yeah, so it's meant to match, is close to the rest, because there's some siding on the side, and there's a little bit of siding on the front, but it's mostly brick. But, yeah, for cost.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. No questions? No questions? Gil?
Well, I was the one who gave Hank the correction, but you put the two addresses backwards. When I started to read... No, it's not you or anything like that, it's his plan. When I started to read that a house was to the west or to the east of this house, I'm saying York runs north-south. There isn't, can't be anything to the west or the east unless you're talking about up at the curve by the tennis courts.
That's right, yep.
So, the house at 26020 is not to the west of it, it's to the south of it, and the house at 26044 is to the north of it. And that's the only thing that I corrected on it.
Gail's on it.
Okay? Other than that, it's a small addition, and it's got downspouts. So, it's got water management.
Thank you, Gail. I don't have any further questions as well. We'll open up the public participation.
Welcome to Huntington Woods.
Thank you.
It is.
Yes.
Amazing.
Okay, so, section 40-6.03, accessory buildings, structures and uses. The total ground area covered by all accessory buildings and structures together shall not occupy more than 50 percent of the rear yard. They probably have room, but we don't see their garage, we don't see their driveway, we don't know if there's a patio, we don't know if there's some other structure there, so...
It's an existing foundation.
It's existing.
It's part of the house. It's not the rear yard.
It's not the rear yard.
It's part of the house.
I know.
The rear yard starts at the back of the house.
At the back of the house, right. But, so then, you can't always assume that that was checked historically. So, now's the time to check it. So, just encouraging you to check it.
Anything else? Any other public participation? Okay, hear none, we'll close public participation. The chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to... The plan as presented, subject to maintaining stormwater so as to not discharge onto neighboring properties. Second?
Those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Would you like to claim it?
Honestly, I... Sure, I'll take it.
You don't have to. We have a recycle bin also, you don't have to take them.
I did pay a lot for these, so I will take them.
Okay. There's five sets of them.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Here, thank you.
Don't take all your stuff.
Not the important things.
Agenda 10, matter of public hearing on accessory schedule, structures.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, we've been informed by the city attorney that the presentation was not going to be ready for this evening. So, what we have asked is that you would postpone the public hearing until October regular meeting on the 27th. At that point in time, we anticipate the city attorney joining us.
Need a motion?
Motion. We do. We'll motion to table.
I will make a motion to table the public hearing on accessory structures.
Second?
Gail, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item agenda number 11, matter of introduction of stormwater management slash drainage ordinance revision.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, we've sent a memo to the city commission asking them to authorize us, because there's expenditures on this, to go ahead and take a look at the draining and drainage and grading ordinance in stormwater management. So, we'll be looking at both commercial and residential stormwater management. This will go on your priority list, and the city commission is asked to just take place right away. So, this is going to be bumped up. So, as a result, what we've done with this is that at the next meeting, you will get a framework ordinance, which is not anywhere near what the final ordinance is going to be, but it's for points of discussion. What there will be is, I've already included in your packet, a Nowack and Fraus presentation that they gave to the city commission. Nowack and Fraus will either be here on the 27th of October, or they will be here at the November meeting, depending on Brad's schedule. But they will be here. Also involved in this will be the city attorney, as far as that. We will have regular access to the city engineer as needed to qualify this. There's also some other things that other communities are doing that we may want to incorporate into what we're doing. So, there's a tie-in there between the city engineer and our legal team. So, we hope to craft an ordinance. I don't want to mislead you or anybody else, this is going to happen in 30, 60, 90 days, because it's just not. So, this is going to be something that's going to take a little bit more time and a little bit more study. An ordinance will be crafted, and again, at the end, the proposed ordinance will be recommended to the city commission for adoption, along with a history of what we've done and how we've arrived at these conclusions. So, having said that, in your packets, you did get the rear yard stormwater drainage report from Nowack and Fraus of what they did. They talked about different types of tie-ins, they talked about different kinds of problems. I do want to point out that Huntington Woods is not all-encompassing as far as soil types. As you get closer to Woodward, you've got way more sand in the middle, you've got blue clay, and blue clay does not drain well at all, period. So, there are other systems that we'll be exploring. You may have a presentation for JEPs, which is a different type of water management system, stormwater management, that could apply to either commercial or residential, and I will be talking to them to come in and give us presentations. So, there will be a lot of presentations and a lot of information that you will incorporate into what will ultimately become the final draft of the ordinance. This ordinance may change several times during the course of this. At each meeting, when we do this, you will be able to take public participation, and you'll be able to hear from residents too, as to what their problems are, and maybe that some of this could be addressed with them. But we hope to have a liberal use, and even in the memo that I sent to the city commission, which they agreed to let us do, is we will have access to the city attorney and the city engineer for as much as we need to, in order to come up with some kind of reasonable solution to this issue. So, having said that, if there's any questions that you have, I guess it's going to be a long-term thing. The examples that you have, some of what Berkeley's doing, what Birmingham's doing, you'll get to see what they're doing to manage the problem. But it'll be good that you'll be able to hear this also from the city attorney and from the city engineer. But this won't be a quick process, but it will be comprehensive.
So, Hank, from a big-picture perspective?
Yeah.
An ordinance is passed, whatever it says, at that point now, everyone's site plans will have to include how this ordinance is addressed in their plan.
Exactly, how the ordinance addresses it.
Depending upon what type of...
Work.
Work it applies to.
Yeah, I mean, if they're doing a kitchen renovation, this isn't going to happen, you know? But if they're doing an addition, and the addition is over, it may be that you decide any addition over 100 square feet. It may be that you decide any addition where the lot coverage is... You can have up to 30 percent lot coverage, but any addition over 25 percent has to have this. There's all kinds of different ways that you can rule out this. And I, not to recreate the wheel this evening, but like Jessica said, not all things will happen for all things. Certain things will be triggers for this as a result of what the planning commission decides, and what the city commission approves. That doesn't include the fact that you may send an ordinance to the city commission, and they may want to tweak it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking about like after all that, how it will work.
After all is said and done, then this will be the benchmark for what we need to do. So, I anticipate reasonably that by next summer, this will be something that we would have a pretty good handle on. With the understanding we only get one meeting a month. And I've got to schedule these guys.
And it has to go to the commissioners.
Well, we'll be done with our part of it theoretically. That's the target that we have. But I wouldn't rule out if it takes a month or two extra to get it right, then we should take that time.
What comes to us are plans for changes and renovations and additions. What doesn't come to us and goes to the front desk and goes to you are permits for patios, driveways, those kinds of things.
Correct.
Those will also have to be addressed with this?
We would like it to be, because there's a difference in types of materials. You may want to incorporate what materials are. Decks, for example, are permeable. Water goes through a deck. Brick pavers, water goes through brick pavers, but it doesn't go necessarily through concrete. Or it does, it just doesn't go... It goes a whole lot slower. So, at that point in time, this would be all-encompassing, meaning addressing curves, driveways, that type of thing. So, it's all stormwater management. So, how do you manage stormwater? For driveways, you manage it with curbs and flow and pitch. That's how you manage driveways. As far as roofs, gutters, and downspout, you manage them by its downspout location. Some communities insist that all downspouts go to the front or go to the back, but they don't go to the side to the neighboring properties. That may be something that gets incorporated. So, having said that, there's so many things, Gail, that you're going to look at, but yes, that will be covered.
Okay.
Question for you, Hank.
Yeah.
When you have the slide that says, what are the solutions, and you list out the catch basin drains and the leaching?
Yeah.
Are those the only three solutions?
Those are the three best solutions.
So, does this then, if we pass this ordinance, eliminate people that do catch basins on their... Look like those big 55-gallon drums, and they put their gutter right in it and you catch the water?
Those are rainwater, and those are typically used to water their gardens. Those are 55-gallon rain barrels.
Right.
That's what that's for.
I've seen them like they tap their drain spouts right into them though.
Yes. Yes. Or they'll use rain chains.
Okay.
And those will go into their... And the whole purpose of that is for them to get 55 gallons of water that they could use rather than to pay for it. Water their lungs. You'll see that on the bottom of those barrels of lot, they'll have a spigot. Attached to the spigot, they'll have sometimes soaker hoses.
Okay.
So, the soaker hoses or a conventional hose are down there, and that's gravity-fed through the force of the water coming down through there. So, yes, that is that. That's not... In an actuality, that manages 55 gallons worth of water, so they'll help.
And the only reason I bring that up is because if we pass something along these lines, I want to take that into consideration in the sense that I think people that have that enjoy those. That's a way to defer water.
Absolutely.
That we shouldn't take away.
Yeah. The intent is not to mess with that, because that's actually helps manage stormwater.
That's all I'm saying.
The intent is to take the surface area and the roof area and manage that water.
Through these items.
Right. With the understanding that certain areas may be subject to problems in other areas or not, like example, the blue clay houses. I happen to have one of those, right? So, I couldn't dig into the ground with a shovel for more than a foot if my life depended on it. But you go up into the hill, and you know, you dig a six-foot trench. It's just the material, the way that it is. Huntington Woods was originally formed differently, like the sand areas that are in the hill area was actually basically from an ancient glacier, and that was when the Great Lakes were way up here, and it's formed back. So, that's all sand quartz, which was originally lake bottom. And that was discovered when they were doing the historic district reports, and they looked through the topography and they saw where it was, and they went back, and a really interesting document. But in any case, that's what that is. So, they have complete drainage, like when there was that flood, 2014, you didn't see a whole lot of debris on the street up there. You did in some areas, but in the middle, it was absolutely...
Chaos.
Eight feet high, the full width of your lot. I know, because mine was out there too.
So, do you anticipate, Hank, that the engineer might suggest different solutions for different parts of the city based on that soil?
It could be. And I think that what happens is that while it may not be necessary to use a JEP system up in the hill, it may be perfect for what's going on in the middle section of the city. And it may be that there's a quote-unquote "deal" to be made with the person that's from, you know, that's using that and the new system, because it is a new system, to the extent where, in the past, where the city commission has endorsed the sewer line warranty, this may be a system where they endorse the same thing. That would also, of course, entail a presentation to the city commission, as well as the planning commission, which also, of course, entails... So, again, it's part of getting it right. So, I'd rather have more presentations, more information, and less drafts, so that when we come to the table with this, we've got a really good, solid draft on this. And at that point in time, we'd be replacing the stormwater and drainage and grading in sections, in the two sections that's in, and consolidating it into one section, so that people don't have to look at two different places for it.
Any other questions, sir?
I would just say that this presentation was given at the commission meeting.
Yes.
So, it's recorded. It was really interesting. So, if you wanted to watch it, it's been added.
Yeah. And we'll be getting a slightly different one here, as our different ideas and concepts develop, and I will be having meetings with Brad to, you know, kind of go over that, see where we're guiding it. Brad, I know, is now aware of the JEP system, and so we'll be taking a look at that.
Is that the one with the little tubes?
Yeah. Yeah. And I will tell you that, like Hazel Park has had a tremendous amount of luck using that for managing like their ball fields and their parks and that, where they used to have lakes. Currently, I know that the person who is the local distributor for that has been in touch with Rackham, who is really not supposed to have water hazards, and that may be the way that they decide to go.
What are they doing at Burton?
So, Burton right now is being completely redone in the back. They're doing a separate system. What they're doing is, is that they're redoing the areas of the track that need to be, and they're redoing all the storage area for that. They're taking out the ball fields.
No, I know that, but like what kind of...
They're not using that.
They puddle... That puddles really badly, too.
Yeah, they're not using that. They've chosen to go a different route. They're using drain system. They have an underground drain system that they're using, and an underground irrigation system.
What did they do over on Men's Club Field or whatever's next to the DPW, when they leveled that at the soccer field that used to really flood? And then they spent...
They repitched it.
They just pitched it? They didn't do anything as far as the system?
They repitched it. Their drainage, as I understand it is...
Sorry?
You're good. Their drainage, as you understand it, is the same. It's been pitched differently and built up differently. When they used to have the ball fields there, it used to be a swamp in certain areas of the outfield, and now it's level, and if you see the kids playing on there, even after it rains, the fields are playable. So, there's a lot to site management with that. The Burton Field is school district property, so we didn't get a chance to weigh in too much on that. But having said that, we really hope that that's a successful venture for them for this. I will tell you that we've worked in cooperation, because some of the improvements that we're doing for like the ref center, like adding the generator and that type of thing, we've worked closely with them and with the school district and the contractors to make sure that we're not competing against anything, that we have a congenial atmosphere with that.
Just made the traffic worse.
Pardon me?
It just made the traffic worse.
For the time being. But then again, I don't know anywhere you can go around here that the traffic isn't worse than the traffic.
Do we need any motion to bring this back?
No, this will be... This was really a notification that we're letting... This is happening, and this will be at the next meeting. This is more of a communication than anything, and it's just an introduction. You can take public participation, which I encourage you to, and then you can... You can take public participation, which I encourage you to, and then you can, but at this point in time, there's really not going to be a lot more accountability we have other than, we are working with the city attorney and we are working with the city engineer on this already and we are reaching out to the people that have the other kinds of systems so that we can talk about that and everybody can, you know, have something to come, to bring to the table.
Thank you. Any other questions for Hank? Okay, so we will open up the public participation. We'll limit you to two minutes. You want to come up?
Well, thank you for starting to take stormwater seriously. Just want to encourage you since number 48 from the master plan, you guys call it AII, it's a high priority, and you have 13, BII is your medium priority. I would say also include number 12, which is launching an education awareness campaign because I'm finding when I talk to people who have water in their backyard, oh, well this guy has a basketball court. And then now with the beautiful advent of BSA online, I can look and, oh, there was no permit for that. So, that's why I would include that, launch an education awareness campaign, make sure everybody knows what 50 percent of the rear yard coverage is. Hopefully you guys all understand because I'm not even sure how the line goes. And then also, when it comes to 6-59, you guys are going to have to figure out if you're actually going to grandfather in any leaking properties because I've been told, you know, oh, if they've been doing it for a certain amount of time, so you're going to add on here, it can't go to other people unless they've been dumping it for 10 years and then you're stuck with it. So, I hope we get a lot of clarity from the legal department on that because we've had a lot of ambiguous and inconsistent enforcement of it. And, and do look at what Oak Park is doing. They've hired some, between satellites and AI technology, you can actually analyze the stormwater of a property very easily. I think that the drainage reviews from Noack and Fraus, they say, oh, won't send it to other neighbors, but they don't show you where the water's going, so... But thank you for taking it seriously, I appreciate it very much.
Al Stack, 13108, talented advocate. I sort of second what was said, but I also want to point out that we do have a plan for stormwater management that was developed by Lawrence Peck, very fine report, I assume you've all seen it. And I hope that if you think about stormwater management, you think about it not only in terms of showing and so forth, but that you look at the whole issue of how do we make the city become a spa, basically a spa, right? We want the city to have as many opportunities to absorb the water, filter the water and have great quality water going into the dome and alternating into our streams and so forth. So, you've got a wonderful report, very detailed, very thoughtful. Hope you can integrate that into your discussions as well. Does that make sense? No, you can just address, just us up here, yeah? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other public participation, we'll close public participation and we'll open it back up for anything that wasn't on the agenda this evening.
I just, I had one thing. You know, Brad's presentation was great if you needed to figure out how to manage your own water. What he did not address is what really precipitated having him come to the meeting is people dealing with leaky property lines from their neighbors. So, again, I would encourage you go on Google Maps and look at the area, it'll be good when the leaves fall, you can see garages a lot better. But a lot of the problems are the garages got all pushed to the back, so you see clusters of, of structures at the property lines and nobody decided where that water was going to go. I'm surrounded by three garages and nobody checked to make sure that their water wasn't coming to me and it does. So, it gets overlooked in these, that would be another thing is to review all these procedures and make sure stormwater is addressed, every chance you can get, especially to fix historical oversets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Okay, we'll close public participation. The chair would entertain a motion.
Motion, so the chair.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.